Good evening. I'm going to open the November 28th Planning Board meeting and we will start with a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for amended site plan for Coleman McDonough, 27-2 Puzzle Lane, map 14, block 1, lot 27-2. Good evening, Mr. Frankewitz.
Hello, I guess just an update. I just got the letter from Mike Vignali. Nothing. Minor stuff. And then I got Jen's letter, I think it was yesterday, just some note revisions and then when the permits are issued, put those on the plans. AOT has been accepted as a complete application at the state. Septic's submitted but can't be approved until AOT is approved, so those are the two permits outstanding and that's where we stand with the plan.
I think everybody must have gone over this whole... This is your answer to Mike Vignali and Jen Rowden's from the last meeting.
Yes, yeah.
There's a little typo on that, I think.
Yeah, there is.
On number 11?
Yes, but that's just a response.
Yeah, and you said...
You said the roof drains are not piped into the catch basin, it's not the swale. I think you meant are. That's, you know, and that's just your answer.
Yeah.
Number 11.
Right.
I have to take a nap to you.
They are piped into the catch basin.
Yes.
Right.
All right, let's see. Okay. Or comments?
I do. Do you think we should do a sit walk?
Charlie, what did you say?
I said, "Do you feel that we should do a sit walk?"
He's asking a question.
Because there's some things here that the engineers are saying that doesn't coincide to me. And there's disturbance on areas where they weren't supposed to disturb. Do you think we should just do a sit walk and take a look at the place?
So you're concerned about the comments about the alteration of the wetlands?
Yep.
The wetlands are all flagged?
They are flagged and there's no disturbance. I think maybe the original 2005 wetlands, they were slightly different. Maybe that's what Mike was talking about, but obviously we addressed it because he's got these six comments now. That was in his first review letter back in September. And he was out at the site, I guess, this week reviewing everything. And yes, the wetlands are completely flagged unless the animals have taken them down in the last month or so, which happens, but...
While they're looking over on this new plan that you had given us, on sheet five, on the comments that are along the left, which are, a lot of them are the same that are on the first sheet.
You're going back to the submitter from the review?
No, this newest one that you gave us.
I think I might be able to... I think they just didn't replace the notes that are on the cover sheet. They need to replace the notes on...
Okay, because I noticed some difference...
On sheet five, that's why there's like inconsistencies.
Okay, all right.
I think if they just put the notes that are on the cover sheet on sheet five, that takes care of all of that.
Yeah, I looked through the notes today after I got the letter from Jen and there's some that were messed up.
Right.
So they're all the same now.
Number seven, number 12, and number 15. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, there's a couple of them that are...
On the sheet five, yeah.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I thought at the last meeting that we had requested that the septic be shown on the plan.
It is.
It is. It's on sheet six.
You missed it. I apologize.
It's on sheet eight?
It's on sheet six. It's adjacent to the building, too.
And it's on sheet six. Did you find it?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I was looking for a circle. That's bad.
That's usually a well perimeter.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
My bad. Very good.
No, that's okay.
Thank you. That's the only question I have.
I was wondering, too. I mean, I don't know how difficult it is, but could you, when you do the final for us, could you put a north arrow on sheet two, please? That's just the overall plan one. And I was trying to look and see which direction was north and unless I'm missing it, I didn't see it. Okay, thank you. Yes, Sandra?
I have to turn my speaker on. On K.V. Partners' letter of the 28th November, number six says that the site is currently an active construction site. We have not completed any formal site inspection during construction and cannot verify that construction completed has been constructed in accordance with the approved plan. But we don't have an approved plan, correct?
Right.
Right, we're not approved plan yet.
Right, so speaking to Charlie's thing about maybe a sit walk, which is when work done, or at least we should say that work done already should be looked at to make sure it's up to the code or whatever it should be up to.
Well, one of the conditions that's going to be is that all necessary building permits and inspections have taken place.
Yeah, but it...
The building permits are acquired and the inspections have taken place.
How can you inspect it after it's been completed?
It's, well, we're gonna have...
Well, actually, you do inspect after completed. The problem is whether or not it can be inspected after it's been buried.
Right.
Right.
But that's the building department's.
Yeah, that's beyond the scope of the planning board. It can be a condition, it's just beyond the scope of the planning board.
Okay.
If I may?
Yes.
I still have a concern that the parking spaces north of the proposed building two...
Which sheet are you on, please?
On page seven.
Page seven.
There are three parking spaces that, on sheet, just north of the lower building, number two, that need some sort of a barrier at the end to prevent people from driving out. I mean, we're getting down to the corner of the wetland over here.
Oh, okay.
I do remember you asked for...
The three separate ones in between the two snow storage areas?
That was one of the things that got missed.
So you need little, those, like the boulders?
Yeah, you need some boulders there.
The boulders.
Is there any provision or not provision for outdoor storage?
No.
Note saying there can't be?
No.
Our regulations don't allow it.
Because I think that those gravel parking spaces are an invitation for outdoor storage.
Talking about like trailers and stuff?
Right.
Our trailers are materials. We have had that problem down...
I'm sorry?
We have had that problem down in that development before with people trying to store stuff outside.
Is that a note we need to...
I would feel more comfortable with a note saying that there can't be any.
Let me just... What do you mean by storage of trailers? I mean, if someone has a trailer that they're parking there in a parking spot, that's a legitimate use of a parking spot?
I'm not only thinking of trailers.
No, not only the...
I'm also thinking about piles of material.
There is a stockpile location indicated on this for access materials.
Right, but we've always told people they can... The note, instead of it saying trailers, is there's no more outdoor storage of production materials.
Right.
Or business-related materials.
Right.
Right, but I think you're talking about like tractor-trailer trailers full of stuff? Or no?
But my concern is very general.
Okay.
It sort of encompasses all that kind of stuff.
I mean, because it wouldn't be approved to have outdoor storage of material outside of the stockpile location that they've indicated, it wouldn't be allowed for the approved plan. You can put a note. They would be redundant to a degree, but...
Right.
No outdoor storage?
They're talking about the... No, not the height of the shrub.
Well, that's a second... That's a secondary good reason to put boulders along those three parking spaces, because that's a place where it's nice and flat and probably be very tempting to push things beyond the parking area.
Mm-hmm.
But when you're getting that close to wetlands, you need to be fairly careful.
Okay, so we're gonna ask for the note. It should be, say, no outdoor storage of...
Materials.
So what kinds of things are gonna go in the stockpile area?
The stockpile area is just while they're doing the...
Right.
They're doing the building.
It's just extra dirt, I think, isn't it?
Yeah, it's just...
Yeah.
Because the stockpile area is eventually going to become a...
Right.
Yeah.
That's why I was getting confused. You were talking about... I'm talking about storage of materials after the building is built and...
Right.
The stockpile area has nothing to do with that.
Yeah, that would be a note on here, but it's also something that we would look for in the con... I'm assuming these are gonna be condos like the rest of the units?
I'm not sure how he's gonna structure out there.
Okay.
Currently, it will be kind of stockpile spaces.
Be tenants, so they won't be condos.
Tom, can you come up here to the... And you can talk into the thing, because nobody at home can hear you if you don't.
I'm sorry. Tom from Northern, you struck us. What's happening with the units are the lower building will be one unit and the upper building will be three units.
Okay.
And also to address the storage containers Mr. Hamm was talking about, I believe it's the trailers that we use for construction that are sitting in the parking lot? Or are you talking about the ones over on 27-4?
Yeah, I'm more... I'm not concerned so much with what's going on during construction.
Okay, all right.
I'm talking about once the buildings are completed, the tenants have moved in, and what they're gonna be allowed to do.
Right.
There's just usually parking spot moves.
Everything else that's storage containers, that's us during construction and we have quite a few of them, actually. And then on 27-4, we have probably eight of them sitting, but we'd have a building permit on that lot, so it will be under construction shortly. So I don't know if that's what you're asking.
No, he's talking about when the tenants move in, that they're gonna put their stuff piled around outside.
Yeah.
So if we have the note on here that says no outdoor storage...
We should be specific. I mean, does some last big company has trailers they keep outside or, you know what I mean? It'd be a two or three pickups?
Trailers are not materials.
No, we're talking about like parts and pieces and...
Okay.
If, just if they don't want to put...
Pallets full of stuff.
Right.
Yeah, I think there's one company that moves pallets nonstop, right? So they're in and out. Image Express. It's, you know, it's a revolving pile, right, as they get stocking and out.
That's actually not permitted by regulation. Because we have another business down there that's a fairly large business. If you notice, a lot of their product was stored outside of their building.
Could we be specific so I know which one?
Halo.
Oh, okay.
Had all that stuff outside.
Right.
That's actually specifically not permitted by town regulation.
Right. Okay, all right. I mean, I just want you to be specific, so when...
Yeah, I mean...
I don't wanna be vague, please, so...
One of the garages, and I don't know which garage, had the start of a small junkyard starting behind their building.
Right.
But they...
It's just so we don't have problems down the line.
Okay, I know which one you're talking about.
Yeah, I'm not certain which one it was.
No, I understand.
But that sort of thing is specifically excluded by...
Okay.
...regulation.
Okay.
And a note to that effect needs to be on the plan.
Be specific, though. It makes it, you know what I mean, so it's clear.
Just say no outside storage of materials.
Right.
I mean, that's...
Yeah, outdoor storage...
Trailers would be a legitimate thing to have in a parking lot.
Yeah, that's a vehicle that's registered and what have you.
What you don't want is dumpsters sitting in the parking spaces.
Exactly.
I don't think there's any really ever...
Yeah, I'm not saying there is. I'm just, I think that's what they're trying to avoid.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Okay, here we go.
One minor note on page seven, a little landscape legend. You specifically say hemlock and I think you mean evergreen. Since you define evergreen later on. That way you're not tied into having to use hemlock.
There's a little typo on that right here, too. Should be tree, not tree, tree.
It's the typo. You have tree. Landscape, come on in. I have tree. Typical trees.
I just have a quick question.
Did you see the little typo on that first thing? The following is a list of common typical and it should say trees.
Says treat?
Yep.
Halloween's over.
Just, we just want everything nice where when we record it.
Mm-hmm.
It's great with all this little stuff, though.
Barb, I have a quick question.
Yes, yes.
Admittedly, I had not seen the photos of the building since they've been... On the bay doors that are at the back, are they just overhead doors or are they loading docks or sized?
Zero loading docks.
Okay.
There's bay doors on each building through here.
Okay, all right.
Same as all of these.
Okay, I just wanted, I couldn't tell with architectural rendering, so I just wanted to verify.
So this is what it looks like now? How much is there already?
Yes. But the hemlock's on plan.
There's even some driveway stuff.
And you have not had a chance to, of course, look at Mike Vignali's, because it just came in this afternoon.
Yeah, I just read through them and they're just minor things, edits to the plans. That's not gonna affect the design at all. A little more additional detail on a few things.
I've noticed that you've given a detail of a pole light. However, I'm not finding any of them on your...
There's two of them right up front of the property. Right by the road. Same lighting. So much ways of putting it on the other side. As you look at page seven, those two lights that are along the front of the parking between Puzzle Lane and parking, those are the two pole lights.
Okay, there's so much detail and I think you'll have a problem with the registry on the northernmost one, where you have a set of numbers.
Most likely, I would not recommend sheet seven in your court.
We're probably not gonna leave this one.
Oh, okay.
Right, all right.
The registry is really, really tough right now.
I know they are.
Well, I was looking going, when you said there were two...
Yeah.
I barely found one. The second one is almost invisible.
I'm still looking.
No, it's right here. These two.
It's...
Corner of the building, right?
This little square thing?
Scott, who?
Yeah.
Building one, there's no dumpster pad? They're gonna share that same dumpster down by two?
Well, it's right kind of...
It's in, sort of in the middle, yeah.
Okay.
That's good.
And you're planning on completing the intermodal road between 27-2 and...
Yes, 27.
You know which one I mean.
This little connecting driveway?
Right.
Yeah, that was noted on a plan about 10 years ago that the planning board wanted it.
At the request of the fire department, if I remember correctly.
It could've been, yeah.
I think that's what was said, yeah. Has the town engineer seen the drainage analysis in there?
Yes. I had a quick email from him after I saw his letter, just asking him if the drainage meets the town regulations. His response was yes.
Drainage is fine, okay.
I mean, it's possible that through AOT reviews, there could be some tweaks required. I would, that's not generally the case, but that could happen.
All right.
But it seems to me all of Newton's drainage requirements.
Okay.
And all of his remaining concerns, honestly, are fairly minor and I think could be... Having a clean letter from him could be a condition of approval to address those.
So where are the overhead doors on the building?
On the west side of building two. And I guess the southwest side of building one.
Roger, try looking at the architectural rendering. The architectural renderings will give you a better sense.
What page is it?
Site plan. It's page 10 for building one.
What?
Oh, it's in that. You're looking in that one.
I was gonna say, yeah.
He's looking at a different one.
I'm looking at a different stack of papers.
I don't see that on here. I can see it on here. This side and this side.
Mr. Melvin has suggested a sit walk. Does the rest of the board feel that that's necessary or do they feel like that'll be taken care of with, when the building department goes down there to do their inspections and everything? We could do that in conjunction with doing some conditions of approval if you want. It's up to the board. I mean, I feel like the building department will do their job and the town engineer's been down there and took a look at everything and... Up to the board.
I'll make that as a motion.
I'll second.
That we go on a sit walk?
Yeah. I have a question. When would the sit walk occur?
Saturday morning?
Then I'll stay because I'm not gonna, I'm gonna be in New Orleans on Saturday morning.
Okay.
So I really shouldn't have any input.
Can I suggest if the board is gonna do a sit walk, that you have specific things in mind that you're looking for? I mean, you can look at everything, but to always have a purpose for why you're doing the sit walk.
Do you have specific things that you were...
Actually, the disturbed soil, that was my concern. And that was the concern of the engineer, too. That's why I suggested it, other than that.
Even on the new letter?
No.
Did he say anything about that on the new letter that we just gave today? He did not mention anything about that, so that's probably not a concern then of his anymore.
Just seems funny. It was a concern and now it's not a concern.
Well, and maybe something was disturbed before and it's not anymore. I don't know.
They did have the wetlands redelineated so that...
Yeah.
It's feasible that that could have altered, in his opinion.
It'd be hard for us to tell.
Right, it's, we're not really experts going down there.
No, but if they've got it marked, if they've got it marked, we should be able to go by the marks.
Yeah.
In the wrong place, but... When them flags are put out there, you know, there's numbers and stuff on there that indicate what it's supposed to be.
Mm-hmm.
So if we see them, we can make a determination ourselves whether they have to do a restoration plan. Yeah, how much area was disturbed and how much it may cost.
Is that in their report?
In Mike's original letter, he had stated something to the effect that if disturbed soil could be required to have a restoration plan.
But he hasn't mentioned it since.
But that's not in his current letter.
Right, it's not in the current letter, so...
Right.
It appears to me that it's not an issue anymore by him not having it in the letter anymore. We have a motion in a second. Do we want to have any kind of vote on this? I mean, and then we could always decide when, if you decided that you wanted to do that?
I'm still sort of looking at what we're gonna, what we're gonna be looking at and how we're gonna be able to interpret what we're looking at.
Right. Because I'm certainly not an expert at knowing even what I'm looking at.
I mean, in a different community that I lived in, I walked a lot of wetlands. If I was, in Massachusetts, the conservation commission has a, that's sort of this kind of review of wetland stuff. I've walked a lot of wetlands and I still don't know what I'm looking at. So I mean, I'm not opposed to going, but I don't know what, you know, if I would really be able to interpret what I was seeing. I think I'm more inclined to depend upon what the engineer has said.
I agree with that, because I wouldn't be knowing what I was looking at either. What do you think?
I guess you have to call the vote.
Yeah. All right, well, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Stane?
Like I said, I won't be, so I don't wanna tie something on something. I can't participate.
Four to two.
Four to two.
Two to four. Two yes, four no.
Madam Chairman, am I allowed to vote this week?
Oh, I'm sorry? Yes, in a minute.
Let's take it.
I'm sorry. I will appoint Mr. Zott as a voting member in absence of Mr. Holland. I'm sorry. Yes, you are allowed to vote.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Would you like to vote anyway? Okay.
The vote's over.
All right. My error, I forgot to notice. Yeah, he is. He wouldn't be here anyway, he said.
I would've had no problem with it if it were earlier in the process and we were going onto raw property. I think right at the moment we're at a construction site, it might... At this point, I'd rather have Mike Vignali down there looking and telling us... have Mike Fignelli down there looking and telling us what is in compliance with the plan and what is not in compliance with the plan. And the...
Don't need to take it any further. Vote, set it.
Well, it's one, one of the reasons that I have no problem with a conditional approval is because as soon as there's a conditional approval, the town engineer starts doing, and as quickly as possible, I want the town engineer on the property to, to make note of what is in compliance and what is not in compliance with the plan.
Okay. We also need that building permits and inspections. If you had that on your... He's working on his list.
Well, no, I've been making a list of what people have said.
Right.
So that...
Is there an hours of operations note?
That, that was actually on my list.
Oh, hours of operation, didn't even think about that. Thank you. Are there blanket hours for the industrial plant?
They've, normally the applicant tells us the type of business and type of hours. I mean, it's, they need to be listed.
Well, would that be set when the companies come to the board?
Well, that's set by the planning board at the beginning.
Okay.
So we do have that question is, do you know the hours of operation?
Thank you.
They will come for you for a business license eventually, correct?
No, the business license is the building department.
Okay, but would they come for you?
We don't license businesses.
Yeah, they have business.
For their occupancy?
Business occupancy.
Well, business occupancy, but not business license.
No.
In Massachusetts, do you have, you have a business license?
But what, I guess what I'm saying is they'll be referring to each business to get their occupancy to their, for their business that they're gonna be doing, correct? So wouldn't you handle each individually?
I don't think they set the hours.
I don't know.
We have in the past for...
No, if there was a change of use, then yes, but at this point, if it's compliant with the district, which most general businesses are, you could set very broad hours of operation, you know, so you don't have, maybe somebody working at 2:00 AM, so like, I don't know, 11 to 5 or something like that, but...
In the other sites in this, in the zone, we have set hours of operation. Off the top of my head, I'm not sure exactly what we wrote, but I, but I know that was a very big concern for...
Usually they're 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Something like that, yeah. They're, they're relatively broad, but...
I think that will fit what's coming in. I mean, the gym is, I questioned the gym, the CrossFit, you know, they may go to 9:00 at night and 6:00 in the morning kind of thing. Because, you know, I'm, you know, I know gyms have early and late hours like that. That would be the only businesses. The wrestling would be, I would say, 7 to 6, something around there, but...
But we, honestly, we have on all the other plans that's for the development, we have established hours of operation.
They're pretty broad, but those, just in general, the way those buildings were set up, they were more likely to have a lot, potentially more truck traffic than I think this site would, just because of the nature of the sites.
Well, yeah, we don't, we don't know what's intended to go in here, so...
I would keep them broad if you're going to do them. 10 to 5, 11 to 5, something like that.
Say that again?
10, 10 to 5, 10 to 6. So 10, hours have, they have to be closed between 10:00 PM and 6:00 in the morning.
Oh, okay.
That's why, were you confusing me? Okay. So in other words, hours of operation could be anywhere between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, I was reading it the other way around.
So was I.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
I think that typically the way we write them is not when, when the, when they can be open, not when they can't be open.
Right.
So the hours of operation would be shown on the plan as being 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
I would, before we, I would like to know what we have set for the other, the other buildings in that, in that area.
Okay.
I'm not sure where that information is right at the moment.
Nothing we can, nothing we can grab right this moment, I don't think.
Right.
They were fairly broad hours as well.
Yes, Andrew?
I just have a general question. Is the occupancy of whichever goes in there contingent on like how many parking places there are? Like, could you have a business that can have like 50 people, but you only have 25 cars to park? Like, what do they do with the overflow? Like, who, how, how is that handled?
Yeah, that was sort of a, somewhat of a question. How do you, how did you determine on the plan how many parking spaces to have?
Well, it really is contingent on the well. The well allows 24 people, so 24 people between the two buildings can work. And then I believe the parking calculation is done by the amount of square feet in...
It is, it's on sheet five in the top.
Right.
So they've stated that the warehouse area will be 23,405 square feet, which requires the 32, or 31 parking spaces. Office area will be 3,345 square feet, which results in 11 parking spaces being required per your parking regulations. That's how they got to the number they got to.
Okay.
So they, they have adequate parking on this site.
Right.
Where were you reading?
Here, the very top of sheet five.
Sheet five, right? This little box right here on the top.
Oh, up there?
Yep.
Okay.
If a use came in, let's say that instead of warehouse space, they wanted all office space and they don't have adequate parking, it triggers a change of use. And if that change of use is dramatic enough to really impact parking, then they have to come in with an amended site plan and then either have more parking spaces or request a waiver from those parking spaces, that parking space requirement. So right now, they can have uses that have, require this many spaces for that type of use. If they change that and, you know, they would need 20 more parking spaces for your regulations, they'd have to come back in.
In which case, that makes me even more concerned when somebody mentioned putting it, one of these is going to be a gymnasium.
Well, I was just gonna ask you that. He was gonna have like classes at different times? Is that what that is?
That was mine, like, yeah, how do you...
I'm sorry, I just need you up there so everybody can hear you.
Yeah, I know, sorry. I, I'm not really sure. It's a CrossFit, it's a veterans' member gym that, that's, I don't know exactly how many members they have, but historically, if you go by a gym, there's maybe three to four cars in the morning, maybe a little heavier at night, but as the other businesses aren't there at night, you know, after four to five, I would say, we, there's ample parking. I mean, if you looked at the site plan, there's, I don't think there'd be, we don't have any issues anywhere else with a karate place, which is very busy.
Right.
And their overflow is never down on the street except for maybe on the weekend when they do, you know, like a tournament. That's been about the only time, but that's really about it. There's plenty, and the little adjoining road bleeds off into the other parking lot too, so I think we'll be fine with that, I don't...
Well, my one concern is the, a martial arts studio usually doesn't have showers. Gymnasiums usually do.
They do, it does.
And, and their septic system would have to be able to handle that, so that would be something you'd go through the building department.
Yeah, that's...
Building department will take care of that inspection.
The building department is aware and there's plans with the building department, what we're doing, and they've actually already chosen the equipment going in and approved it. So, okay?
Thank you.
That begs the other question, if it's gonna be a gym, whether or not it needs to have overhead garage doors?
Why?
Doesn't mean...
Oh, because that may not be, that not be, they may, that might not be the next person that comes in.
Exactly.
That's why.
No reason.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, are people comfortable at this point or...
Which, which building is this gym going into? The front one or the back one?
It's just a portion of the front building, I guess.
The front, because there's three units in the front building, you said?
Three.
Three units in the front building? Okay.
For some reason, I thought it was the other way around.
No.
Well, there are no floor plans on the elevations, but that's not...
What? I didn't hear what you said.
There are no floor plans in the drawings, so... I have all of that.
Okay.
Before I go into my list, are people comfortable with a conditional approval at this point or...
Depending on the conditions.
It's a fairly extensive list, one, two. There are seven conditions. Okay, then I would make a motion to issue conditional approval for the site plan with the following conditions. A clean letter from the circuit rider, a clean letter from KB Partners, that the D, the New Hampshire DES AOT permit, the New Hampshire DES subsurface permit, and the EPA NHDS permit, numbers be noted on the plan. All other permits and inspections are obtained, that boulders are added to the east side of the parking lot north of building two, that a note regarding that no outdoor storage of materials or business products shall occur on the property, and that the general hours of operation to be shown on the plan is no earlier than 6:00 AM, no later than 10:00 PM.
I would second that motion.
And that, and the recordable Mylar must be received before the certificate of occupancy is issued.
If I could just ask, yeah, Jen recommended five and six, is that what you want to record? Just so that...
Yeah, that is my recommendation. That would be the overall site plan and then also the, basically the infrastructure and drainage.
Yeah.
And it would contain all of the notes that are on the cover sheet that they're gonna put on to sheet five.
Is, I didn't read every single thing on this front page because what you're gonna record is sheet five, which sheet?
Five and six.
Five and six.
Five and six, okay.
But one of my other comments was that they need to transcribe the notes that are on the cover sheet currently onto sheet five because right now, they actually contain all of the old notes from the previous...
Correct, you know that, yeah.
So assuming that change is made. And the other notes that have been discussed tonight.
Okay. I think I would also like you to put a note on, on one of these pages that we're recording, I think, or maybe on the front page, that says that the recorded pages are part of an 11-sheet plan, the rest of it's at the, at the planning board office?
Note 10 could be amended, just state that.
Okay, so we have conditions of...
Wait a second.
Oh, you're still writing?
Okay, so all the, all the notes from the cover sheet shall be added to a recorded page, and we're recording page five and six.
You made the motion and I believe Mr. Zott seconded it. Is that right, Mr. Zott?
That's correct.
You seconded, do you second with the additional?
I don't know if I can do that.
Okay.
I think someone has to make a motion to amend the first motion.
No, 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 I'm accepting that. I'm accepting my only words as a friendly amendment.
Okay.
So if you're okay with adding those few?
I, I will second this friendly amendment.
There are nine conditions now.
Okay, yeah, okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second?
I have a question.
Okay.
Now, the actual lot keeps going, right?
No, that's...
What you see is this lot?
Where, where's the back end of the lot line?
If you look at sheet two, it shows the entire...
Yeah, well, that, that's my point, is sheet two shows the whole lot, which is a lot bigger than what's shown on sheet five.
Sheet four also shows the entire lot.
But that, that was sort of what, where I'm getting at. So you're, you're recording, the sheets you're recording don't have the whole lot on them?
They're only recording the site plan, to record the site plan, not this.
That's not that unusual to do, Roger, just to record where the active change to the site is. You'll have the rest of the site plan on file at the 10.
Yeah, right, I, I wasn't, you know, that was my, my question, but that's, that's not a problem with the, with registry.
And it's just to make a better readable scale for the site.
Are you finished, Mr. Doggett?
Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion and a friendly amendment and a second to that? Do we have a vote on this? All those in favor of the conditional approval?
Hi.
Okay, that's unanimous.
You can give that to...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, June.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you. Jen, there isn't, unless you have something for us, there isn't anything else right now, so...
The only thing I had quickly, and it's really more for the selectmen than the planning board, but the MS4 permit grant that you guys received or from my office, we're gonna be sending the contract to the select board in the next couple of days for their review so we can get started on the MS4 stormwater work.
All right. So rest is just regular board business, so if that's all, then you could...
All righty.
You could leave.
Hope you're feeling better.
Yeah, I hope so, too. Nope? Okay, all right. Wait a few minutes until everybody goes. Okay, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes from November 14th.
Move to approve.
Correction?
Correction.
Page three.
Page three.
Fourth paragraph. Motion was made by DZOT, and it doesn't have the result of the motion, of the vote, which was four to three with, with me, Charlie, and Sandy opposed. It was...
Which one are you talking about?
I'm talking about the, the second motion. That one.
Yeah.
He made a motion, it was seconded by Doggett, but the, the result of the vote wasn't... He made a motion, it was seconded by Doggett, but the result of the vote wasn't recorded.
You just have to list whether, one group of the...
But it doesn't, it doesn't...
Doesn't want to start the group, that's right.
Don't list the result of the vote.
Not this vote.
There were two votes. The first one, the first one is listed, the second one, the result of the vote isn't listed.
Okay. Okay, I didn't catch that. Okay, so you can add that.
Yep.
Yeah, so it was four to three with... Opposed, no, Charlie, the vote went the same way, it was just, we were voting the opposite.
Yeah, I get it.
Yep.
It was me, Charlie, and Sandy were opposed.
I was going to congratulate our secretary on her ability to come up with minutes after listening. The tape got screwed up.
Yeah, oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did we just have one manifest tonight?
Oh, wait a minute. I have, no, I have a motion, a second, a correction. All those in favor with the correction?
Aye.
Okay, that's, was that a yes?
Yeah, it was a yes.
Okay, unanimous. All right, thank you. All right, manifests. I got it, I got it, just leave it there. Okay. Okay. Operating budget expense manifest is $69.13 for postage and telephone.
Move to pass.
All those in favor?
All right.
Unanimous, thank you. Correspondence. I think, was this not sent to everybody?
No.
I don't know. Okay. Okay, you saw this?
Yes.
Okay.
That's just an FYI.
Okay, so let's just say FYI, all right. So, we'll see if anything comes of that.
Would you like to share that with the rest of the board?
Excuse me?
Would you like to share that with the rest of the board?
No, because it's actually not something that's in front of the board anymore.
Okay.
It's something that we sent to code enforcement.
Right.
And they decided to CC the planning board secretary, but we determined several meetings ago that it was not a matter for the board.
Right.
Very good. Just curious.
Yeah. Oh, you can read it if you want.
I don't know the answer, she asked the question, that's all.
It's not something that we...
You're both looking at it going, wow, I'm curious.
It's a can of worms. I don't think we want to reopen.
Very good, very good. Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Can I ask a question, a general question?
No, I was going to say, are we finished yet? Yes, of course you can ask.
I'm interested, on this note about this particular, that says only 24 people can be in both buildings at the same time. So who keeps track of that? Like, is it the building department who issues the occupancy permit? Is he the one that says, okay, you have, you know, 10 here and 10 here, you can only have five over here, or, like, does nobody really ever look at that?
I think kind of the fire department does a, only this many occupancy. I think after it's, I think what the fire department usually says, you know, the maximum occupancy and whatever. And I, you're right, I don't think anybody actually keeps track of it unless there's any kind of complaint.
So you'd think the building department should, if that's on the plan, why do we bother putting it there if they don't, nobody looks at it?
Because it's what the septic system is.
Because somebody would look at it at some point in time.
But this way, they are on notice that they can have 24 people in this much space, whether it's 12 per building, or how they want to divide it up. The problem that they will have, would have, is, say, heaven forbid, a fire were to break out in one of these buildings, and it turned out that they had 42 people in the area as a gymnasium, and somebody died. They would first go back to the plan and go, well, the plan said you were only supposed to have 20, you know, 24 people maximum in the buildings on site.
The liability's off us.
Right.
Right.
But then, is it on the town, because the building permit got issued for that many people from the building department?
No, the owners, on the business that's in there.
It would only get issued for the 24.
Right.
Right.
That's it.
They had 40 in there, like they probably have in the gym, because there's no doubt about that, because people go to the gym before 4:00 in the morning.
Right, yeah.
So they're going to have plenty of people in the gym, so if the roof caved in and hurt the people that are in there, we're free and clear.
Right, it would be on them and their insurance that they have for that, right?
We, we're a board without many chief, when it comes to this sort of thing. We don't have the ability to enforce.
Right. Sandra, I think a lot of times, too, when they talk about that maximum, that's like if you were in office and the people are sitting there for eight hours a day. If you have people that are coming in just for a little bit, and then they go back out again, I think that that's, you know, you still have your maximum occupancy for, with the fire department, but I think that they're talking about people who are actually there all day long.
But I thought that number, in this case, I thought that number came because of the size of the septic system.
Well, exactly.
Right, so...
But again, I think that that's mostly geared around, when they figure that out, I think it's geared around people who would be working there all day long, kind of like an office setting.
One of the problems is the fact that it's a calculation method that is actually planned more for, assuming these areas are going to be more retail space, so you're going to have X number of employees that are there for a eight-hour shift, a 10-hour shift, what have you. Those are the people that count. The variables...
The trainees.
You know, the people that come in, spend 15 minutes, and leave, necessarily using the facility, so you're not preparing accommodations for them. But that's why I had the concern about one of them being a gymnasium.
Right, because now you've got a lot of people taking showers.
Well, exactly. But that's something that the building department and the health department actually have to work together on.
Right.
Because needless to say, the septic system is...
Not adequate.
Plans on somebody washing their hands, rinsing out a teacup, not a bunch of people taking showers.
Right, if you have eight people there all day, like I said, washing their hands opposed to 100 people around the day going in and out, it's more water consumption.
Exactly.
All right, I was just interested.
I second his amendment, his motion to adjourn.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, we're adjourned at two minutes to eight.